Okay, good evening. Welcome to the January twenty second, twenty twenty five meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. Can we please rise to salute our flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, omnipotent, just as all. Thank you. Okay, so this first portion of the meeting is we have to nominate our professionals. So, oh, you know what? I'm sorry. Let me read the notice first. My apologies. Notice of the meeting has been satisfied in accordance with chapter two thirty-one, PL nineteen seventy-five, by advertising in the Home News Tribune notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and Star Ledger, positioning on the bulletin board and filing with the borough clerk. Okay, uh, yeah, we'll start with the chairman. We need a roll call, please, I think, before? Or no? Yep, here.
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 Here. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I would like to call for nominations for chairman for twenty twenty-five.
Nominate Ron Green for chairman.
Ron Green is nominated. Second? Any other nominations? Okay. Closed nominations, and a yes vote is to confirm Ron Green as a as chairman for this year. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Thank you. Congratulations, Ron. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for vice chairman.
Nominate Tom Krasinski for vice chair.
Tom Krasinski. Second, Anthony, thank you. Any other nominations? Okay. Uh, Anthony. Okay, closed nominations at this point. Roll call, please, Joan. Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein.
Yes.
Mr. Castlebrand.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Mr. Sondre.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Tom. Okay, now we'll take nominations for our zoning board attorney. I have, just for the record here, I have a resolution, okay, naming, uh, for the record, appointing Alex Fisher and on his law firm, but I will take any nominations at this point. Does anyone have any objections to that? Okay. Uh, we need to, uh, so it's, yeah, we have to, no other nominations, we'll close those nominations and we'll take a roll call. Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein.
Yes.
Mr. Castlebrand.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on, we will take nominations for our engineer. Any nominations?
I nominate CME Jay Cornell.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll close nominations. A roll call, please. Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein.
Yes.
Mr. Castlebrand.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Mr. Sondre.
Thank you, Board members.
Okay, two more to go. We'll take nominations now for our zoning board planner. Anyone?
Nominate Michael Fowler as our planner.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. Roll call, please, Joan. Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein.
Yes.
Mr. Bellah.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Mr. Sondre.
Okay, and finally, our favorite. Oh, congratulations. We'll take nominations for our zoning board reporting secretary.
I nominate Joan Kimball.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll close nominations and we'll have a roll call, please. Yes.
Mr. Scottston.
Yes.
Mr. Castlebrand.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Mr. Sondre.
Okay, congratulations, Joan. I think that completes the nominations, right, for twenty twenty-five? Okay, I'll close this portion of the meeting and we will return to our seven thirty regular zoning board meeting. I don't need a motion for that, right? Just close it.
Yeah.
That right? Let's do it. You recording? You're locked. You're recording, you're good. Okay. Good evening again, and welcome to the business portion of our January twenty twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. Will rise once again, please, to salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, omnipotent, just as all. Thank you. We'll read the notice once again, just for the record. Notice of this meeting has been satisfied in accordance with chapter two thirty-one, PL law, PL nineteen seventy-five, by advertising in the New York News Tribune notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and Star Ledger, posting on the bulletin board and filing with the borough clerk. Roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Mr. Bella.
Here.
Mr. Scottston.
Here.
Mr. Castlebrand.
Here.
I don't believe we have any old business, so let's start with the new business, application twenty-two zero two, Insight Development Partners.
Good evening, Board Chair and members of the board. My name is David Prasad, licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey, here tonight representing Insight Development Partners LLC. We are here tonight seeking a an additional one-year extension of time for application twenty-two dash zero two, which was a preliminary and final site plan approval with bulk and use variances. Uh, the original application was approved in April of twenty twenty-two, and according to the borough's ordinances, that is a protected timeframe for two years with the expiration set for May twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four. We were here last year generally about the same time. We saw a one-year approval because there were several outside agency approvals that needed to be sought after and they were delayed. Those were Middlesex County and several NJDEP and Middlesex County Utility Authority approvals. I want to make clear that those approvals have been received. The last thing that we are waiting for and why we're here for another extension of time is Middlesex Water Company. The applicant has to relocate a twenty-four-inch water main on the site, and relocating it is becoming difficult. There needs to be an entire work of engineering done. The water company and the applicant reached an agreement. It's a one-point-two-million-dollar relocation, so there's several engineering drawings and plans that need to be created for that, and none of those plans could be worked on until the agreement was reached. As far as I know, the agreement was received at the end of last year, somewhere between October and December. So the engineering plans are currently being worked on, and we are just waiting for the final requirements from the Middlesex Water Company. With that being said, there's also some other reasons why we're seeking an extension of time, just to appease some tenants, there are prospective tenants that are looking to lease this warehouse building, and currently a few of them have expressed some apprehension with the expiration date coming up this year, even though it may be possible to begin construction with the water company approving the twenty-four-inch water main relocation, tenants don't seem to feel very comfortable with it. Also, the financing process, they're in the process of receiving financing from several different institutions. They also do not like the fact that the expiration is coming up this year. They just want another level of comfort. So inclusion, we are here seeking an additional one-year extension of time to May twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-six. We don't anticipate, we need that entire amount of time. However, some of the items that we need to get finalized have proven a little bit difficult. So if you have any questions, I mean.
I have one, maybe two. So you have the drawings in place where your engineers are pretty much know their marching orders and, but when do you have a start date, proximate start date, and how long, and second question is, how long from that start date will this take to finish?
So I know that the applicant wants to begin as soon as we can get those plans finalized by the Middlesex Water Company. The plans are being worked on, they're not finalized yet, they do need to be reviewed by the water company, and there are certain things such as pilings and reinforcement of the pipe that needs to be relocated that weren't on the original pipe but are required now for the new project. So those, those things are taking some time, and we need to match to specifications that are provided by the water company.
How long does the project take, start to finish, once you get all these approvals in place?
That I'm not sure of. Um, every applicant, every developer wants to be done as soon as possible, usually, but I don't, they're not wasting time in the sense of delaying, they're just, they just need to get these approvals finalized before they can move forward.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other board members have questions?
The letter you say impending expiration date, May twenty twenty-four, you're asking for a one-year extension, but you're asking to May of twenty twenty-six?
Yes, correct. That was a typo. That is a mistake that we made submitting the letter. It is, the expiration date is for this year, May twenty twenty-five.
Any other questions? Do any of the professionals have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, from our standpoint, there's no comments that they have addressed the conditions of the board's resolution of approval. As was indicated, they've got some tenant and financial issues as well as Middlesex Water, so no problems with the extension being granted.
If there's any other questions, we'll open it up to the public. Any questions or comments about this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public. What is the pleasure of our board? Okay. Second, okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Escudino.
Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Castlebrand.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks. Your extension has been approved and we'll memorialize it at our next meeting in February.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, next up, we have, we'll hear application twenty-four zero nine, Jack Nowak, forty-nine Hillside Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Wasneski, Wasneski and Associates. I represent Mr. Nowak in this subdivision application that involves a continuation of a non-conforming pre-existing use on the property. If you're familiar with Hillside Avenue and Saraville Boulevard, Saraville Boulevard had previously been Sarin Fisher, and when Kaplan Companies got a subdivision for that development, one of the properties on Saraville Boulevard has a tail that goes out to Hillside Avenue. My client owns a property on Hillside Avenue, and he's been using that tail of the property as his driveway since he bought it, and the person whom he bought it from had been using it as a driveway for that property for many, many years before that. What this application represents is really Mr. Nowak acquiring, wanting to acquire title to the property he's been using by clipping off that tail and making it part of his property on Hillside. At the end of the day, the lot left on Saraville Boulevard will still be a totally conforming lot. They just won't have this tail at the hillside, and Mr. Nowak's lot on Hillside is very non-conforming. First of all, it's got two structures on it, it's got a single-family and a two-family home, and you'll hear testimony that talks about how long they have been there, but also the lot does not meet the minimum lot size as currently configured, and you'll hear testimony from our surveyor that by making this addition, this strip of land, the lot will now be a conforming seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lot. It will have the required frontage. It'll still have some non-conformities, but they will be much less than they had been previously. Mr. Nowak's not planning on doing any work, not planning on making any changes. He's just acquiring the land that he's currently using as a driveway. He's just now making it legal as opposed to using somebody else's property. So with that as way of introduction, I would ask counsel if the board will accept jurisdiction. I had sent a certification service. Thank you. And if the pleasure of the chair, I can have our first witness, Val Berginsky, our licensed surveyor, come up and describe the site plan and the subdivision. Mr. Berginsky? Assuming this works.
Um, I don't know, sometimes.
It does.
Right.
Okay, why don't you just set up right there?
I do.
Would you accept him as a qualified expert to discuss this as a licensed surveyor?
I do, yes. Yes. Sorry. Yes, you're accepted.
Mr. Berginsky, would you walk the board through in more technical terms than I just laid out for them as a layman?
Sure, so the two existing parcels about each other, back to back, one parcel is at on Saraville Boulevard. That's the conforming lot that meets the existing zoning ordinance. The other parcel is at forty-nine Hillside Avenue. That's the parcel that has some non-conforming conditions. And currently, the non-conforming portions of the existing lot on Hillside Avenue, the frontage is fifty-eight feet and should be seventy-five feet. The lot area is also non-conforming. The building coverage is non-conforming and the area coverage is also non-conforming. So we're proposing to take the driveway, this portion that leads from the rear of the parcel on Saraville Boulevard extending all the way to Hillside Avenue. We're proposing that that existing driveway and that thirteen-and-a-half-foot strip of land go towards the parcel on Hillside Avenue. That will, that will make the the lot area conforming to the zoning ordinance. It'll make the building coverage conforming, and it'll bring the lot width closer, much closer to the seventy-five-foot zoning ordinance. And yeah, and the lot coverage will be closer as well.
So just going through it, the the lot is currently six thousand two hundred and sixty-six feet, the Hillside Avenue lot.
Correct.
And then going with the added strip, it'll become seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five feet?
Correct.
All right, so it'll be conforming.
It'll be conforming, yes.
Okay, and right now, the lot has building coverage of twenty-point-six percent because it doesn't have that strip. Adding that strip reduces the building coverage to sixteen percent.
Correct.
And by adding the strip, we're also reducing the lot's overall impervious coverage.
Correct.
Okay. And is this going to in any way impact what happens to the lot on Saraville Boulevard?
It won't.
And in terms of what it will do for Hillside Avenue, will it bring this lot to be closer in conformity to the surrounding properties?
Yeah, it'll bring it closer to existing use of ordinance, yes.
Okay, I have no further questions for Mr. Berginsky. Does the board have any question?
Evening, Dan.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with what the applicant described, that this, even though they need a use variance, that is caused by the two existing structures on the lot. One is a two-family, one's a single-family. They, by adding the lot adjacent to it to this one, you're reducing the intensity of the existing variances. We did have a report where we indicated that there were some technical requirements that needed to be addressed, and also the existing driveway is not five feet off the property line, which is required by ordinance. It's been that way for years, but technically there's a waiver that's associated with that.
Correct, so to Mr. Cornell's letter, which I think is dated today, there are four comments at the end. One is about the waiver. Yes, we're asking for a waiver because that driveway is two feet off the property line and there's no way to make it five feet, which is a requirement. So that's a requested waiver, and then the other comments about modifying the plans to the signature blocks and other technical aspects of this, we agree to do those.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had a question about our two floor in the plans today, and the application seems to be very positive in nature. They're eliminating a double block condition of property as long as Saraville Boulevard, and also eliminating lot width condition for the same lot on Hillside Avenue as the Cornell said, and the attorney has said it'll prove that this is not a lot of Hillside, but making that lot larger, they're actually making it less of a tentative use and making a variance for the use a better situation. So nothing negative. As far as the possible criteria to get this to the wall, no contact, they're going to be on the bank.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much for your testimony.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I next call Jack Nowak, the property owner.
Good evening. My name is Jack Nowak.
You're gonna have to be sworn in first.
I'm sorry.
You swear to tell the proof that the whole tree is nothing but the tree, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
You're sworn in.
Hey, Mr. Nowak, are you the owner of this property on Hillside Avenue?
Yes, sir.
And you see the property on Hillside, it's indicated on this plan that's been presented to the board?
Yes.
Okay. The driveway that you use or have been using for this property is technically on somebody else's land, correct?
Correct.
That land is owned by the homeowner on Saraville Boulevard.
Correct.
And you've approached them about acquiring that property.
The story was like this, on the beginning, when I purchasing the property for nine Hillside, I noticed on the survey that is the strip of the line, like the alley or driveway. On the time when I was buying, I asked him.
You have to hold the mic onto your mouth.
And he has, and he said, yes, he used from the time when he purchased property from nineteen eighty-six. So, and I asked him, do you have any problem with using this one, or anyone was complaining or any objection about the use? He said, no. This is the my knowledge what I had from the previous owner. Plus, I would like to make the clear, this property, this land, when I asked the owner, he said probably this property will never use because on the property line between the lake development and Hillside is retaining all five foot high. So it's no way the owner of the property facing to the Saraville Boulevard will use. When I, he asked me, can I like to purchase? And he said, we discussed, and he said, this piece of the land is not useful for him. He's not access to the lot.
Jack, let's talk about your property. On it, there are two dwelling structures, right?
Correct.
And when you bought this property in two thousand eighteen, those were there.
Correct.
Okay, I want to show you something that I've marked as exhibit D, which is a survey of the property. Can you can you tell the board what date is this?
So that this survey for the, from the previous owner, this survey was dated from October ten, nineteen eighty-six.
And as the survey show, the two structures on the property.
Showed the two property, two-story front, two-floor building and the back building with the one floor plus on the show the exactly line of the driveway, how he used the driveway to access to the second house on the backyard.
Thank you. And when you bought the property in two thousand eighteen, you received from the borough of Saraville a certificate of resale compliance?
Correct.
And that's what I'm showing you is exhibit B. That's for which property?
The building on the back, which is the name like the C, forty-nine C.
And then this other one, which is marked as exhibit A, is for which properties?
It was referral like the residence of the of the property.
But but it's, what's, what address?
And forty-nine A and forty-nine B was like the building facing to the hillside.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Does the board have any questions? I don't know, we'll do so with the professionals, maybe. Does anyone have any questions, Jay or Mike?
I think during the technical review process, the question came up is how did the two-family house and the single-family house come together on one lot, or were there ever any variances provided for that? And I think the testimony indicates that it's been there since nineteen eighty-six, probably a lot longer than that, but it's been there for an extended period of time.
So, Mr. Nowak, do you have an estimate of the age of the building? How old do you think the building is? How old do you think the building is, buildings?
It's existing building, probably front and back is about the, at least eight years old.
And you base that on what?
Why, what is the explanation? On the time when I was trying to fix the building on the back foundation, because we had a problem with the foundation, so I decided to. Make the proper uh structure. I discovered brick from the original stamp, sire.
Seren Fisher brick.
And the Fisher uh brick. So the, is exactly because it's the stamp on the brick. So on this case, my evaluation was at least eight years plus what I noticed on the. Original survey, the property line on the both side of the neighboring lot was the. Uh, by the date from the. July seventeen eighteen ninety. One hundred eighty ninety is the one line. Another property line is the mark up on the date on the eighteen nine eighty eight. So there's probably houses much older than.
Probably right. I have no further questions for Mr. Nowak.
Hey, thank you. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Naya? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just wrap up by saying. This is a minor subdivision uh that has a wrinkle in it because it has a non-conformity. That non-conformity has not been created, expanded, or changed in any way by this property owner. Uh, you've heard testimony that the changes here are actually going to make the lot more conforming, not perfectly, but it's going to be more conforming. Which really meets with the plan and intent of zone plan in Cervel. So I think you've met the necessary burden to establish for the grant of the variance as well as the testimony for. The grant of the subdivision, and I would urge the board to favorably approve this.
Thank you.
And I rest.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public for any questions or comments about this application. Seeing none, we will close the public. What would the board like to do?
A motion to approve the application.
Okay, um. Sorry, do we need roll call, please? Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you. So we'll memorialize this next month for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you send me the transcript?
Okay, you have two resolutions to uh.
One, four fifteen, Patrick and Joe, sadly, everyone, those are the whole body. Has everyone had a chance to, um. Against the issues, uh, need more donation?
Yes.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Mr. Escudero.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
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 Okay, our final resolution is twenty four sixteen Lindsay DeMile Brown, three fifty nine Washington Road. Has everyone had a chance to um read Mr. Fisher's um memorialization? Okay, is everyone in agreement? Have a motion to memorialize, mem- memorization. Anyone?
Motion to approve?
Yes. Second, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Escudero.
Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Castle.
Yes.
Mr. founding.
Yes.
Okay, both resolutions have been approved. Um, I have a question for Joan. I, I don't remember November. Did we, we have to approve the calendar for twenty twenty five? We want to do that next month? For all our meeting dates? We usually do that. We did that already. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've got the minutes, but the annual report? Okay, has everyone had a chance to read the annual report? I didn't realize we were voting on that today. My apologies, Jay. Thank you. Okay, any questions, any comments? Okay, seeing no, like to make a motion to approve. Can I have a motion, please, to approve?
Okay.
Second, roll call, please. Excuse me. Yes.
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 Okay, thanks, Jay. Uh, lastly, the minutes from our uh November twenty twenty four meeting, uh, has everyone had a chance to review them? Any questions? Okay, uh, does, uh, does everyone, so if everyone approves, can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes?
Thank you. Roll call, please, Joan. Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
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 Okay, I believe that's all we have. Okay, I'm sure Ron and Tom are, are, are looking in tonight, so we wish them uh speedy recovery. Get back soon, please. Get back soon. Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to uh. End the meeting? Adjourn, yeah, that's it. Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All right. Everyone have a nice evening.
Job, Anthony.
Yeah. Jeez. School board's easier. It's easier to school board.